All right. Good evening, everyone. Tonight is February 25th, and this will be a regular session city council meeting. Time started is at 6:00 P. M. Flag salute. Councilmember Pride, will you please lead us in the flag salute?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic, which extends one nation under God, indivisible, with equal justice for all.
Thank you for that. And then we will have a roll call, please.
Councilmember Busby.
Present.
Councilmember Pride.
Present.
Councilmember Hanson.
Here.
Vice Mayor Thomas.
Here.
Mayor Hudson.
Present. Perfect. City Manager, any changes to the agenda?
There are no changes.
Okay. Item 5A is a presentation on the, from the Finance and Measure I Oversight Committee. You will receive a finance update from the committee regarding its first meeting on January 21st. City Manager Marty, do you want to start us off?
Just very briefly, I wanted to just remind the public and the council that the new Finance Committee was established in October of 2024 with brand-new bylaws. As part of those bylaws, there are quarterly meetings of the Finance and Measure I Oversight Committee. Within a month of those quarterly meetings, the committee comes back and returns to the full council with a report out on what occurred and what was covered in the agenda of the Finance Committee. And so this is that first report from the very first quarterly meeting of the new Finance Committee that took place on January 21st. And as you can see, we've attached to a very brief staff report the minutes from that meeting, as well as many questions were attached to the minutes as an exhibit related to questions that came up during that meeting. I think it was a, it was a really good first meeting, very robust conversation and dialogue. I'm not going to go through everything. I think at this point, I would just like to turn it over to the committee members and ask if they would like to add anything to the discussion and the presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, I would. One of the things that this particular committee has enlightened me with is that out of our $5,800,000 budget, we receive 27% of our revenue in the first six months of the year. Or 1.62 million dollars. But we spend 54% of our budget, or 3490,000. So property tax all comes in in the second half of the year. And we have ongoing sales tax and TOT tax. But, but it was rather startling to see that 54% of our expenses in the first six months, but only 27% of our revenue. So the need for adequate reserves, you know, Marty's been talking about, we need, we have cash flow concerns and we need to have reserves. Well, it hit me upside the head like a stick. So it's critical mass that we do that. We did have a great conversation. We asked a lot of detailed questions about certain items within the budget. They've done an adequate job of telling us what those things were, as contained in, in the staff report. One thing that, from a private sector I look at, if you have an expense, but you have revenue that comes in to offset that expense, I set it up where I have, say, 4,500 is the account number and 4,501 was the credit. Well, you can't do that in government accounting. It's over here. So when you look at your, your fire department, strike force, there's all this revenue coming in over here, but it's not, you don't see it on the, you just see the expense on the expense side. So it's, it's learning where that is. And so they're making some adjustments, I think, that we'll see. That's a little bit easier to follow. Correct me if I'm wrong here, Joanne, but I think we're going to get this to the point where it's a little bit easier for all of us at the dais to understand, as well as our public. And one of the most important things we're going to do is our next meeting in April is the Town Hall meeting, where we will invite the folks in to share with, with us and the committee what they would like to see some of those sales tax items revenue is spent on. Now, we obviously, as a council, need to address an adequate amount for the 25, 26 budget. We need to make sure we, we park a substantial amount to rebuild our reserves. We need to address some serious deferred maintenance items that need to be addressed. And hire back some of the staff positions that are actually empty, that have not been filled because of that. And then there will be, might be a little bit of money at the end of the year that we could say, this is what we have available. Where would you like to see us with that? And then it'd be up for us to decide, but we hope to, Matt and I hope to be able to get that information from the Town Hall and bring that back for, for us to consider from that Town Hall in April. So that's kind of a quick synopsis. Matt, do you have anything to offer on top of that?
Yeah, I think I've been very gracious of Rick and, and staff be really gentle with me. The biggest point I'd like to make is that we're not, we're not committing to how we're going to spend these funds or anything like that until we understand the real dollars that are coming in. And we're, we're committed to, in that April meeting, I've encouraged a handful of folks to come out and participate in that process. I think Measure I is extremely, you know, there's a lot of anticipation with this. And so we're not, we're being very careful to not talk in, in hypotheticals. We, we only want to give information when we have actual tangible stuff to tell folks. So just making sure that everybody understands we're, we're not talking about dollars and cents because there are no dollars and cents yet.
If I may add one more thing, something on my radar, and I've talked with Joanne about it, but it's not immediate because we're looking at trying to figure out where we are with our revenue coming in, and we have a lot of hurdles. But I think this committee needs to take a look at reviewing the city's internal controls over its accounts payable, its accounts receivable, and its investment policies. And so the staff has protections that we're making sure that we know where the money is going and where it's coming from, and that we don't have to worry about an unscrupulous individual pirating some of our precious revenue. So I don't suspect any of that is necessary, but as a retired escrow agent who went through three full audits every year, the internal control process was huge to make sure that we were adequate supervision and eyes on, on what the product, the financial situation. So I think our, our efforts as this council in creating this committee is, is very positive for the benefit of the citizens. That's all.
Perfect. So we're not going over all the, everything? Just the, I'm just giving a quick brief overview?
I don't know if we really need to.
Okay.
You know, they're switching to Tyler, and so there's been some keying errors. Understandable. When I was doing the accounting for my business, I had a lot of correcting entries to correct the entry that corrected the entry because it was wrong originally. So things happen like that. I think they're also narrowing down some of the counts, the number of accounts that we have and better naming them. For example, one of the things is the electricity bill that we pay to Clearway for the sewer funds shows up under general expenses, I think. So that's we discussed, and they were going to create an account for energy utilities for the sewer funds, so we can actually see what the cost of electricity is for, for that. But right now, it goes into a pile of general, general expenses. And so those are the type of little nuanced changes that we'll make that will actually make things a little bit more clear and understandable and more, to use the term, transparent.
Perfect. Awesome. Thank you very much. Next on the agenda is Public Comment and Consent Calendar Forum. All matters on the consent calendar are considered routine and are approved by one motion and vote, unless council members or the city manager first request that a matter be removed for separate discussion and action. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning consent calendar items or regarding matters that are not already on the agenda are invited to make oral comments for up to three minutes at this time. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff and/or the audience. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any item not appearing on the posted agenda. Does anybody have any public comment on something not on the agenda item? Go ahead.
Good evening. Mayor Hudson, members of the council. For those of you that don't know me, I believe that's just Mr. Busby. My name is Vince Holvik, and I'm your appointee to the Glen County Mosquito and Vector Control Board. And I did plan to come earlier, but I've had some scheduling conflicts that came up and didn't allow me to be here. So I apologize for that. Anybody who's lived in the county for any time at all knows that mosquitoes are our city bird, I guess you might say. And being a member of the Glen County Mosquito and Vector Control District, I'm going to call it the Willows District today, and you'll see why in a minute as I get into it. Our district was approved by voters in 1962 and finally went into action in 1963. So we've been around for a little while. Covers about five square miles and includes the city limits of includes the city limits of Willows and the incorporated area north of Willows and the northeast service district. It's governed by five board members, of which I am appointed by the Willow City Council. The other four members are appointed by the Glen County Supervisors, called the Glen County mosquito and vector control district, but it's primarily Willows, if you look at it. We're elected for, appointed for a two-year term. I was appointed the first time to this custody position in 2015, so this is my 10th year. So I, thank you for all of that. We meet regularly every last Tuesday of the month, and we're located out at the Willow's Airport. I think it's in the same building with the same furniture, same file cabinets and everything. I was there in 1962, except for the air conditioner and the computers. We are fortunate to have two outstanding employees. Luke Niblick, Niblick is our manager. He has been our manager since 2018, and he's been with the district since 2005, so a 20-year employee. The other one that we have is Derek Nunes. He's our assistant manager, and we only have two, so we got a manager and assistant manager, and they do all the other work as assigned. And he's been with the district since 2007. In 2007, the Glen County Board of Supervisors established a special assessment district for mosquito and disease control purposes, and they called it the Valleywide Mosquito Abatement District. So having the Glen County Mosquito and Vector Control District and the Valleywide Mosquito Abatement District is a little wordy, so I got the Willow's District and the County District. Well, go with that. The Valleywide District covers approximately 420 square miles, and it is the valley floor, mountains this side, so basically the east side of the county. It doesn't include us. It doesn't include a rice pest district to the south of us, and it doesn't include Hamilton City. Hamilton City is covered by a Bute County Vector and Mosquito Control District. Don't know when it happened. I talked to Luke, and he thought it was sometime in the 1980s. Because we were Willows and county didn't have anything at the time, so they went with Bute, right on the other side of the river. Bute has had a mosquito and vector control district since 1948. We were a little late to the game, but anybody, like I said, grew up in the 1950s here, you knew we had mosquitoes. We do use a number of different methods to monitor mosquito populations and mosquito-borne disease during the busy season, and the staff is out there routinely and daily doing inspections in rice fields, pastures, residential areas, neglected pools, various other areas where there's standing water. We use 14 light traps to monitor mosquito abundance and the different mosquito species in our area. And by the way, there are approximately 50 species, different species of mosquitoes in the state of California. So there's a number of out there. The traps are put out, the contents are collected weekly. They're brought back to the office where they're identified to determine the species of the mosquitoes and the overall abundance. For your information, the female of the species is the only ones that bite. They're the only ones that transmit the disease. The males do not bite and everything else. But it's quite interesting to see our staff under a light magnifier when they bring these traps back and they spread all these mosquitoes on a table, and they're going through all of them, but with tweezers. Looking at each one, counting them, determining the sex, determining the species, and everything else to go along with that. Don't even ask me how they determine the sex. The males have beards. I found it out today. I hadn't asked before. Somebody asked me here.
I was going to ask the question, so I answered it already.
No, the mosquitoes have the beards, and they said it's, that's the males. And we also have a sentinel chicken flock of six chickens that we place out into the county. And biweekly blood samples are drawn from these chickens and sent down to the California Department, Department of Public Health, where they're tested for encephalitis and West Nile virus. At least once a year, we strategically place 21 encephalitis virus surveillance traps without, throughout Glen County. They're retrieved the next morning, and they're placed in vials and sent down to the UC Davis Mosquito and Vector Control Board down near where they test for West Nile virus and encephalitis also. In 2003, Glen County had four reported human cases of West Nile virus, and we had one in 2024. We're hoping 2025 continues that. It usually goes on a cycle. Some years are better than others' years, and you really can't determine it based on what goes on. By comparison, Bute County had 18 in 2023 and 11 last year. Statewide, 343 and 123. So 2024 was a good year statewide even for, for everybody. Fogging for mosquitoes typically takes place May through October. The Willow's District gets fogged Mondays and Thursdays. The rest of the county gets fogged once a week. I got to be honest, not every road and every street and everything in the county is done every week. It's done by the abundance of mosquitoes complaints and things like that. They avoid daytimes. They do it evening for a couple of reasons. One is in the daytimes. They don't want to get the positive insects sprayed, and EV light breaks down the chemicals so they aren't as affected during the daytime. So they do it night when the mosquitoes are out. Also, weather conditions, if it's windy, or we have an inversion layer where the fog can't get out, or it goes too far up, they will not spray. They also do special spraying as needed, like for July 4th, something like that. If they need it, they'll spray ahead of time, or sometimes for the Glen County Fair. They'll do the fields around the fairgrounds, so then they get a positive there. Every one of our fogger units is audited annually for appropriate volume and the droplet size of the spray. And every few years, we do change the chemical because the bugs and the mosquitoes build up a tolerance to the spray, so we have to change that periodically to make sure we ensure, ensure the efficiency of the spray. Also want to point out, there's a lot of good information on our website. It's a fantastic site, by the way. If you look at it, I'm going to have a little handout that'll have the address on it. It's glenmosquito.specialdistrict.org. And the staff will be putting out more information as we get closer to the busy season, May and things like that. There'll be things in the newspaper and flyers put out. So with that, any questions?
Is it true that Bute County does their mosquito abatement by plane? With a crop dust?
Yeah, I haven't heard. I haven't heard. They're a little bigger, and they got a bigger district. I know they cover the whole county. There's, is the whole county, I know, by the way. But I don't know that.
Oh, no, someone had just said that they go, instead of going up and down every street, they actually circle and circle.
You really got to be careful with the spray. Especially around the waterways. I mean, we're so regulated by the state, you can only imagine when we're doing the chemicals, the spraying, and the waterways around here, and organic orchards, the honeybees and everything else. So it's quite.
Could be hearsay, could be imagination.
The staff has to go through, so.
Yeah, what about safety-wise, the chemicals that you guys are using? I know you do it at night, and most people are not hanging out outside because there's mosquitoes.
Right.
How are they for animals, humans?
They're safe for that. They're regulated by the state. We have to, like I said, report every chemical we're using. We do adulticides and larbitides is what they spray and what they do, regulated by the state. We can't spray it, not on the list.
Okay.
So it's as safe as the state says it is, so as far as the health-wise and things like that.
Fair enough. Thank you.
Yeah.
Any other questions from?
Yeah, no, shade learning something for me.
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, no, thank you, Vince. Good information. So, yeah, and thank you for your service on, on the Glen County Mosquito Abatement District Board. And, and the Glen County Board is effective, has effective results. I'm not so sure about the Valleywide District with the occasional spraying that goes on there. That's a big area.
That's a big area.
I just, you know, I tell you what.
Control all of it with our rice fields.
Since they've started that, I can't tell the difference in Cudora, not one iota, since they started that in 07. But who, is there a separate board for that? I've never heard.
For what, the Valleywide?
For the Valleywide.
Uh, Valleywide contracts with us. For the spraying. They don't have their own spray or anything else. They just have the assessment district, and then they contract with the Glen County Mosquito and Vector Control District for the spraying.
Interesting.
And they sort of tell us what they want and what they expect, and, and we tell them what we can do and how effective it's going to be, and work with them on that, but.
Interesting.
Yeah.
And that's once a week for the Valleywide?
I found out today, when you're going down the roads and spraying, if there's big trees on both sides, the mist doesn't get into the fields. It doesn't do much good. So it's pretty ineffective to do tree-lined streets with quite a bit, I mean, out the country. So a number of things affecting what they can do and how they don't do. Do a lot of, by phone call, talking to citizens, things like that, finding out where the mosquitoes are. Right now, it's a bad time. Mosquitoes are out.
Everywhere.
And we can't spray during the daytime and things like that. So then the mosquitoes go in at night. So right now, it's a little different time. Like they said, it's the vector control board's worst time of the year right now. Mosquitoes out, and all we can do is say sorry.
That's good information, Vince. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Good to see you.
Good to see you. Good, good to get out. Okay, thank you.
Well, thank you. Thank you for having us, or thank you for coming and giving us that presentation. That was really helpful.
I happened to be listening to the December, I think, of 17th meeting when you were doing the committees, and you had mentioned, boy, it'd sure be nice to see Vince.
Yeah.
And I was listening to that, I'm going, oops, okay, put that on my calendar. And I meant to get here before now, but that was also the meeting I was telling Marty, where they changed batteries in every one of your microphones throughout the meeting. It was interesting to listen to that.
Oh, yeah.
On the internet.
The tail of the.
In and out.
The traveling microphone, yeah.
Yeah, the traveling microphone, Joe running around. It's quite interesting. I do have a handout about mosquitoes in California. I'd like to.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
All right, thanks, Vince.
Thank you so much for your time. If you have any further questions, like I said, the website's right listed on the top of it. That's a pretty good, pretty good site to find out a lot more about the mosquitoes in our area. Thank you.
Beautiful.
Thank you.
Thank you. Perfect. All right, is there any other public comment on anything not on the agenda for tonight? All right. So next we have items 6A, register approval, 6B, minutes approval, 6C, Pioneer Community Energy Expansion to Willow's, 6D, David Coastland Contract Amendment, fiscal year 2425 sewer rehabilitation project, item 6E, fiscal year 2526 landscaping and lighting special assessment district, 6F, letter of support for federal self-help housing program. Does the council have any questions or anything to pull off of the list above?
Mr. Mayor, I would move to approve the consent calendar with the amendment to 6B, the minutes approval that Carleen placed on our dais this evening.
Second motion, Mr. Mayor.
Okay. Any further discussion? Okay, all in favor, signify by saying aye?
Aye.
Aye, all opposed, same sign? Motion pass 5-0. Okay, next on our agenda item, discussion and action calendar. All matters in this section of the agenda are discussed and will be acted on individually. Individuals wishing to address the city council concerning any of these items are invited to make oral comments for up to three minutes as each agenda item is reviewed and discussed by council. Please address your comments to the mayor and council members and not to staff or the audience. When the mayor calls for public comment, please raise your hand to be acknowledged. Will not require the city request that you state your name and clearly, clearly for the audio recording. By state law, the council is not permitted to undertake any action or discussion on any items not appearing on the posted agenda. If you have documentation that you would like distributed to the city council, please mail to the city clerk or hand it over to her, and she's sitting right over there. First item on the agenda is 6A, solar power purchase agreement for the Civic Center and Fire Station. And this is to authorize the city manager to execute a power purchase agreement with RP Willow Solar 2 LLC and RP Willow's 3 LLC for the installation of the roof mounted power solar system at the Willow Civic Center and Willow's Firehouse. Joe, it looks like we have you on deck to give us a brief synopsis on this one.
So, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, and council members. We also have Michael Manny Nello from Trinary Energy, probably butchered his last name, sorry, Michael. But yeah, this is a continuation of the item from the meeting on January 28th, where we brought forward the Civic Center PPA and roof replacement side letter, along with the Firehouse PPA. There were several questions that required further clarification before the council was willing to proceed. So city staff took those questions and worked with Trinary Energy along with their subcontractors to provide responses, which are included in attachment four of your packet. Some key modifications to the actual PPA included the not-to-exceed limit for the interconnection costs, the definition of the degradation factor, and additional language regarding solar components and hazardous waste. Other minor clerical issues that were brought up were addressed as well. The side letter for the roof replacement had language added to ensure timely reimbursement upon completion of the roof replacement project. And it has been noted that the side letter is still dated January 28th in this packet, and that will be corrected prior to the execution. So with that, I'll take any questions, unless, Michael, you want to add anything at this point?
Nothing to add. Thank you for the council members, Mr. Mayor, and Joe, for allowing us to represent this.
Yeah, of course. Council, anything to, questions, comments, concerns?
Well, I asked a lot of questions originally, and my questions have been answered. So the, some to my satisfaction, some is just the way they are, and some of it, we just have to live with. But I look at this, the degradation factor, they build the system to 94% over the life expectancy, that efficiency level drops to 83.31, if my math is correct. The guarantee performance of 80% lowers that number some more. But at the end of the day, what, everything I can see, cost per kilowatt is still less at the end of 25 years as it is today that we're paying PJ. So obviously, if we had the resources, it might be better if the city wills could buy the system, but then we'd have to maintain it. Certainly seems that this is an appropriate thing to do for the cost savings and the benefits that we receive for it. So I've answered my questions, and I'm ready to support the process.
Perfect. Councilmember Pride, anything to add?
Nothing.
Councilmember Hanson?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I, I, I think that the contracts cover all the bases, and, and like my colleague, Mr. Thomas just said, you know, the second best thing is a power purchase agreement. We can't afford to buy the system outright. And obviously, there's profit built in for, for the, for Trinary, obviously. I mean, that's why they're, that's why they're in business. So it's a significant cost savings. I think it's, I think it's the right thing to do. And I'm very satisfied with the, the final contract as presented. So thank you to staff and to Trinary for bringing this all together. And thank you, Rick, for, for your questions as well. But I think I'm in favor of moving forward with the agreement as presented, and especially like the fact that we are getting a new roof on this building, which so, we so badly need.
Yes.
So that's good. So thank you again for all your work, staff, and also to the Trinary team. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Busby, anything to add?
I'd fully support and everything. I just wanted to make sure, hey, obviously, we have a, a little bit different roof circumstance than when we originally did this. You know, the, once we get under the hood, if we find additional damage or anything like that, like have we, do we have a plan for that essentially, if, if there's more to this than, than meets the eye?
We have already had a structural engineering.
We have already had a structural engineering assessment of the ceiling in the library, which I believe is what you're referring to, the recent incident. Um, and it was not as extensive as, um, we were first concerned about. Um, it, I mean, certainly it needs to be repaired. Don't get me wrong, but, um, it wasn't, um, like the entire roof or something like that, really. What's, what it looks like it's going to be is replacing the main structural beam, um, from east to west in the backside of the library as well as, um, installing some additional support to the joists that are attached to the, the main beam. And that's mostly what we're going to be doing. And so it's really turning out to be more like the interior roof slash ceiling and not the exterior roof, which is what this is about. So I, I don't think that they dovetail at this point, but if they do for some reason, we have started having internal conversations of what that might look like. But I don't have an answer for that yet.
Yeah, no worries.
And just to add that too, um, even though we're in the process of going through these agreements for the Civic Center and Firehouse, uh, they did come out, barrier solely the subcontractor, and examined the Civic Center and Firehouse roof this last Thursday, as well as the wastewater treatment plant, just to get their final kind of structural notes for their plan development. Um, so they were out here last week looking at obviously not the damaged portion of the roof. I told them to stay off of that, but the, uh, the remainder of it, so they can move forward with building their plans and specifications on their side.
Thank you. Sorry, I cannot walk and chew on them at the same time. I was making a quick note. All right, um, sorry. Next up, public comment regarding item seven A. Okay. At this point, we will ask for a motion to be made.
Mr. Mayor. Oh, Rick, did you start?
Nope.
Okay.
I, I hadn't found it yet.
Mr. Mayor referenced item seven A. Move to authorize the city manager to execute a power purchase agreement with RP Willow's Solar Two LLC Attachment One and RP Willow's Solar Three LLC Attachment Two for the installation of a roof mounted solar system at the Willow Civic Center and the Willow's Firehouse and authorize the city manager to execute a side letter Attachment Three with Trinary Energy for a financial reimbursement of the roof replacement at Willow Civic Center.
Second. I'm missing a part here. I'm with Vice Mayor Thomas over looking for the right section. Uh, first and second, any further discussion? Seeing none. Uh, this will be a roll call vote, I believe. Is it a resolution? Yeah. That's what I was looking for was the resolution portion of it, and that's where I was. We're on, uh.
Councilmember Buzzy?
Yes.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Yes.
Mayor Hudson?
Aye.
Perfect. Okay, motion pass five to zero. Uh, next on the agenda is, now I gotta find my spot again. All right. Item seven B, emergency declaration, failure of library, ceiling and roof. Uh, recommended action is to ratify the attached resolution, which finds that the recent partial collapse of the library, ceiling and roof was an immediate threat to the public health and safety of city employees, contractors and visiting public to the library and Civic Center, thereby requiring an immediate expenditure of public funds to stabilize the ceiling and roof. These emergency findings are required in order to qualify for statutory and common law exemptions from competitive bidding requirements. Joe, do you have anything further to add to that?
No, but not really. I mean, the, the, like Marty stated already, kind of the big thing is that with the initial visit from the structural, engineer, that the damage seemed to be isolated to the, the one structural beam and did not have any other impounding effects on sidewalls or anything like that. Not saying it'll be a straightforward repair process, um, but definitely need emergency authorization will allow us to get through this design work and then find a contractor expeditiously as possible at this point.
Okay. Perfect.
Am I correct in assuming that, um, our five thousand dollar deductible and the rest would be covered by our insurance? Ultimately?
I believe so. So far it looks like, um, it will be, but, um, we haven't received all the invoices yet for the work. We currently have, um, a structural engineer for about seventy-five hundred dollars is working on the construction design in the back part of the library. And, um, I haven't gotten an invoice yet from, uh, Clean, Clean Right.
Build Right.
I get that name wrong every time, um, who helped with the emergency shoring up the, of the ceiling as well as the pumping of water off the roof. So I don't know how much that is, but so far, uh, the adjuster has been very cooperative and supportive and I don't have any reason to believe that there'll be any additional cost beyond the deductible.
Thank you.
Councilmember Pride, anything to add?
Nope. Good report. Thank you.
Councilmember Hanson?
Oh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. No, I just, yeah, we, in my opinion, we need to move forward with this emergency declaration in order to cut the red tape and the, uh, any unnecessary government-related delays and get the repair work done. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Councilmember Busby, anything to add? Perfect. Um, yeah, I don't know if anybody's, I believe there was a picture in the valley mirror, but, uh, when you walk back there, it's a pretty, uh, scary sight when you initially walk back there. I wouldn't imagine, uh, wanting to go back there and try and find a book for somebody, uh, with the way that roof was set up, even after it was shored. So I'm glad to see that that's work being done, um, expeditiously and, uh, so that's all I have to say. Um.
Mr. Mr. Mayor, they just, you know, in our, uh, our very dedicated, uh, library, uh, employee, Caitlin E. Horn is here tonight and she, uh, came to work and discovered the damage. So thank you, Caitlin, for being on the job and spotting it before the entire building collapsed. So good work. Thank you.
Yeah, I was going to call for a public comment. Go ahead.
No.
So, okay.
No.
So for the record, the question was, was there any damage to, uh, any of the personal property of the city, uh, the books or anything like that inside? And the answer was no, so.
The only thing I'd like to add is just, we forgot to include this in the rationale for the recommendation. But the reason that this is on here is because it is actually required under the code to, you know, um, announce a state of emergency, especially when the city manager starts expending money beyond our budget authority. So, which is what obviously I had to start doing the minute there was an emergency. So then we have to come back and bring this declaration to the council. So I just want to make that clear.
Perfect. Um, is there any public comment regarding, uh, item seven B, this emergency declaration? Okay, and with that, uh, motion is in order.
Move to approve item seven B, emergency declaration.
Okay, I have a first, I have a second.
Well, second.
Okay. I have a first and a second to pass a resolution of the city of, of the city council of Willow, of the city of Willow's adopting findings of an emergency associated with the partial failure of the library, ceiling and roof and authorizing city staff to take emergency actions to make required repairs. Is there any further comments from the council? Or staff? Okay, with the, with that, this will be a roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Busby?
Aye.
Councilmember Pride?
Aye.
Councilmember Hanson?
Aye.
Vice Mayor Thomas?
Aye.
Mayor Hudson?
Yes.
All right, on to item seven C, reestablishment of Willow's Police Department. Uh, recommended action to negotiate an additional two-year law enforcement contract, service contract with Glen County Sheriff's Office through June thirtieth, twenty twenty-eight, and revisit the process and funding of a new Willow's Police Department after the city has received two quarters of Measure I, the one and a half sales tax in November twenty twenty-five. Uh, Marty, do you have anything further to add to this?
Um, only that I just want to mention that since the sales tax, um, was passed in November by the voters, the, um, Law Enforcement Services Committee, which is an appointed committee by the council that includes Vice Mayor Thomas and Councilmember Hanson, have met and developed this recommendation. Um, and basically, um, this has been initially, uh, discussed with the sheriff in broad strokes, high level, the principle of literally the recommendation you just read. And the sheriff has, um, agreed to be cooperative and trying to figure out a path forward. Um, we didn't discuss any details about what that would look like or, um, cost, any of that kind of thing, just, um, being open to the idea of a two-year extension, uh, while we build up some reserves and also see exactly how much we're actually going to get, because right now everything is a projection and a forecast. So that's the recommendation.
Thank you.
I'm sure the committee would like to add something, though.
Yeah. Committee, do you guys have anything to add to that before we ask for comments?
Yes, yes. Uh, and I know Rick, Rick does as well, I'm sure. Uh, yes, uh, Marty summed it up, uh, very nicely. Uh, you, you've seen the report by Brian, uh, Euler, our consultant we hired, uh, who presented for us and, uh, another copy of that report is part of our agenda package this evening for reference. Along the same lines that, that, uh, my colleague Matt Busby mentioned earlier about, about the sales tax measure, uh, passage, thank God. But, uh, as indicated in the staff report and Marty's run-up, we need to see exactly how much revenue is going to be coming in because reestablishing a police department will, will be costly, be a costly endeavor. And, uh, it's just wise and prudent to, uh, wait two cycles to see what type of revenues and receipts we have coming in from the additional, uh, sales tax revenue. And, uh, and see where we're at and then reevaluate that. In the meantime, uh, make sure that we, uh, continue uh, providing effective and efficient public safety to our citizens by extending a contract with the sheriff's office. This is a, a major endeavor, as, as you're all aware, uh, rebuilding a police department. When we contracted with the sheriff's office in twenty seventeen, I never thought in my wildest imagination it'd be, uh, having this discussion six years later about, uh, possibly going back and reestablishing a police department based on a number of factors, uh, and, uh, the least of, of which, uh, doesn't pertain to, uh, just hiring and, and, uh, and, uh, you know, keeping personnel on board with, with, with a small agency. But it is a major undertaking. It needs to be done right. If, if we're able to move forward with this, uh, in November, when we do have the, when we do see those receipts, uh, it's going to take time to do this. Uh, it's, it's, it's a large mountain to climb. It is, it is achievable and if we can afford it. And if we can afford it, you know, I'd like to see that, but it, it's only wise and prudent to see if we can actually afford it and see what the costs are. Uh, public safety, providing public safety services is, is, uh, uh, our, our sworn duty, you know, to, uh, uh, provide and afford to the, to our constituents. And it's expensive. It's expensive business just by the nature of the business. So, uh, anyway, I, I think this is, this is, this is a wise business, uh, uh, decision, uh, to, to see how we are in November and then can, and move forward from there. But in the meantime, um, work with, continue working with the sheriff's office to make sure that we, we have contractual law enforcement in place. Because if we do this, like I said, we need to do this right and, uh, do it once and do it correctly. And just, just to, for my final comments, as I mentioned, uh, Brian, our consultant, uh, recommended the collusive police department model, which was a, a smaller contingent of, of police officers. I disagree with, the only part of Brian's assessment and, and his assessment was, was, uh, accurate and, and very good, top quality. And he knows what he's doing, but I would agree that the, or I believe, strongly believe that the, uh, model similar to the William, Williams Police Department model would fit our needs. And it was something we would need, which, which would cost us more money, uh, with two or three additional personnel and the gear and equipment that goes with it. So those are my comments. So I think this is wise decision and that's all I had, Mr. Mayor. So thank you very much, uh, Rick.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Thomas, anything to add?
Yes, I do. The, and I'll be quick. Um, my thought process with it is even if we started today, we're going to be two years down the road before we can have a, a semblance of a police department. So just taking the opportunity now to negotiate an extension of this service, so we don't have that hangover head, not, and we'll have a definitive number for us to be looking at what it's going to cost to maintain law enforcement services while we pursue others, other opportunities. One of the other things that we had in election, there's a new man in the White House. And as I've heard the reports, there's been greater numbers of people, uh, signing up for our military services in December and in January than they've had in many, many years. So I'm kind of thinking that there might be a return to thought process of people bracing American public service, police service, military service. And as those people come out, we're two years down the road, three years down the road, we might, this issue of counties and cities offering thirty thousand dollar signing bonuses is because there's not enough people willing to do the job. If we have this return to civic pride and people are signing up for military service, to me that says maybe there'll be a little bit more appreciation for the law enforcement world and more people would be inclined to sign up for it. So it might get better for us. And the other thing that concerns me is if we're willing to buy somebody by buying them the thirty thousand dollar stipend to join your service, as soon as that stipend has been earned, they're going to go sell themselves for another forty. So I'm hoping, because finding the staff is the biggest key. Putting all the pieces together is going to be the easiest part. Maintaining and finding the people to run it is going to be the hardest part. And I'm kind of hoping that two years down the road, we might see a better opportunity, a more larger employment pool. Maybe that's pie in the sky. But I think we'll be better off a few years down the road.
Hope you're right.
And having a solid number already negotiated going forward for the budget purposes is the best way for us to understand where we are. Perfect. I recommend.
Thank you, Vice Mayor. Councilmember Pride, any questions, concerns or comments?
I do. So I think my frustration with our law enforcement has been, um, the perception of the service that we've gotten under the current contract, but I do believe that our sheriff has a heart for the city of Willow's. And I believe our current contract spells out them providing a full level of general law enforcement services. We're a community of sixty-one hundred people at this point in time. And is it really realistic to, to really bring back our own police department? I fully support the committee's thing, the same push it back. Let's see what our money looks like. Let's see what potential staffing looks like in the future. But I also think we have to take a really close look at our current contract with the Glen County Sheriff's Office. I think having more conversations with them, we've had, we've had this trial run with our new sheriff. I think there's some room for improvement, for better communication. Um, more community-based law enforcement going on that would benefit Willow's. When I talk to people in our community, they, they're happy. When we call nine one one, someone comes. You know, I don't think that's the issue. Nine one one calls are handled very well. Um, but I think it's that police presence that they see in their community every day, that they see that traffic enforcement, they see at the schools, they see, I mean, people don't drive well in this town, that there's a, that there's actually a presence. And I think for the city to feel like we have a say-so a little bit, our current contract reads very much that they will provide our general law enforcement services the way they think is best. So I think we have a lot of opportunity going forward. Like I said, I agree with, we don't take it off the table to reestablish our PD, but we have this opportunity to continue to have dialogue and communicate with our Glen County Sheriff's Office, who I do believe has a heart to serve Willow's. We're electors of the sheriff and we're part of the county. Um, when you talk to people in city manager positions or some in other cities, they're quite frankly like, you guys are small. How can you expect to keep running these programs with all the regulatory issues and pressures when you, when you have a pretty small population base? And I think that's just a factor that we've been talking about. When you look through the budget and the feasibility study, I believe that the, the, the twenty twenty-six number that our, um, contractor gave us was about two point one million dollars, which included a hundred and forty thousand dollars for dispatch. When you look at the contracts that the GCSO has negotiated with Orland PD, their dispatch fees are a hundred and sixty-five thousand in twenty twenty-six and they go up to two hundred and seventeen thousand in twenty twenty-nine. So we're budgeting and looking at a hundred and forty. And I don't know, again, if they base that on call volume. Animal control is currently included in our contract with the Glen County Sheriff's Office. In the two point one four million, that's our base level proposal under the PD, animal control's not in there. So again, the Orland contract starts at ninety-three thousand and goes up with the CPI every year. So I'm just, when you look at those numbers, you know, what we're paying the sheriff's office currently isn't much different than what we're proposing paying for our own PD. So I think we have to just ask ourselves the question, our responsibility for, for Willow's is to make sure that Willow's citizens are getting good law enforcement services. I believe that can be done through the Glen County Sheriff's Office. You know, Justin, if you are listening to this, I have not been a fan and I will admit that. But it's critical that we work together. We're going to. We're going to have differences of opinions. Staffing has been tough, running a jail is tough. But I'm excited that we can postpone a decision. We can continue to have good dialogue with the sheriff. And whatever we come up with is going to be what's best for Willows. So thanks for the work of the committee. It's appreciated.
Thank you, Councilmember Pride. Councilmember Busby?
Yeah, so I think everybody's kind of hit on it. I think it's really easy, especially with, you know, talking about standing all this up. We really do focus on the money, obviously, because money's tight around here. But that's not the only resource that we really rely on. I think we've talked about the the people aspect of this and and, you know, Councilmember Hanson was was gracious enough to share with us, you know, hey, in 2017, when we when we shuttered this originally, a big part of that was because of staffing challenges, right? Trying to find the right, you know, find people. You know, again, I I think Glen County Sheriff, not not to to say that it's being done out of any kind of, you know, decision or anything like that, I think they've had staffing challenges. And so if GCSO is having staffing challenges, and this is a resource that we are very much putting a flag in the sand and saying, hey, we want to go forward with this, well, you know, maybe is it unreasonable to ask GCSO to kind of do a certain amount of staffing tracking throughout this extension? So it becomes part of this feasibility studies, we can see, hey, you know, how is it going at the jail? How's it going for for regular patrols? And we can actually track, you know, is is the current administration actually leading to more people getting into law enforcement? Or is this still going to be a problem in two years when we actually have to make this decision? So I I'd like to be able to see if we can track GCSO's level of staffing. And, you know, again, not to say that it's being done, you know, out of anything. Also to to make sure that we're getting what we're paying for, right? We we owe it to to everybody, you know, spending this money on law enforcement. If we're we're paying for, you know, we bought two Snickers bars, I want to get two Snickers bars. So making sure that we're getting the level of staffing that we're paying for, as well as being able to to get a little bit of data toward the toward the future staffing challenges as well.
Okay. My two cents on this is that to extend the contract is a smart decision, right? We don't want to jump to, jump the gun on trying to establish a PD and end up putting the cart before the horse and end up falling flat on our face in five years. We definitely want this to last long term, such as Vice Mayor Thomas was stating earlier in his comments. As far as do I believe Willows does need its own law enforcement, I think that that is crucial. I think when we discuss the fact that we do have schools here, you know, and we have consistent residents here and the sheriff could use the deputies and other parts of his jurisdiction. You know, I I think that that would be a good way to go is for us to be able to provide our own security for our own people and not be looking out or, you know, hoping for somebody else to do it. I I don't like asking for help outside our own small community. I think that our own small community can take care of itself. But yes, it is a it is a numbers game. However, public safety is first before the numbers game. And so if there's, means we can't do something else at that time because we're more worried about public safety, I think that's the that's the key factor is first, let's make sure we're safe and inviting to new people that want to move here. And by saying we have our own police department that we care about our public safety, I think is a big a big push in that direction. I think when you tell people, yes, we have a Willow's Police Department, we have a Willow's Fire Department, and they're both paid and they're both fully staffed. I think that goes a long way rather than saying, well, we have a volunteer department and we contract our law enforcement with the county. And then when people ask, well, is the county deputies in your town? Well, yes, they are. I've always seen them whenever I've shown up to a fire call or anything else, they're there when they're needed. But we always know that the Willow's PD will 100% be here all the time. And they know exactly what their job is, and that's to protect Willow's. And I do know the sheriff has been very amicable and trying to help us with this decision and is looking for ways to help us. And so I do think the two-year contract is a great start to that, especially if we can start building into that contract. I guess the best way to put it is is pie slices to when we establish, start establishing a police department and we end up with an administration, administrative staff, we're not paying for their administrative staff. We end up with half the officers, we're not paying for all the officers. And hopefully a way for us to build that up slowly and over time to make sure we're not jumping out of our shoes and tripping over our own feet. So with that, I will ask for any public comment regarding item 7C, reestablishment of Willow's Police Department? Public comment, anyone?
Evening, Mr. Mayor and council. And some of you may, most of you know me. Carl Walter, resident of the city of Willow's, retired police sergeant from Willow's PD back when we had one. 34 years still in law enforcement. And I came up here, I had a whole bunch of little bullet points I was going to hit on if you didn't, but you guys hit it pretty well. And I think the key issue that I had thought of was how brittle the numbers. And I loved that the proposal was well done, well thought out, had a lot of details. But I thought with the staffing and with two marked units, patrol units, the department I work at right now, we've got 20% of our units down at any one time. And if you have one unit down, and these cars would be operating 24 hours, that was a little thin. But and I know it was the bare bones version and it could be improved upon. But I like the idea, I like the concept. And like all of you were saying today, you know, it's prudent to look forward to when we are in a much better financial situation or to see if we can even rebuild this. I do agree, having our own police department would provide a lot more comfort for people out in the community. I hear every week people are going, I don't see patrol out there. I know they're there, we all know they're out there, but when you don't see them, you don't know, are they with us? Are they out in South County? Are they out in Butte City? Are they, but are they in Willow? And if you don't see them, you don't believe they're there. Those of us who know the people at the sheriff's department, we know they're. But if we had Willow's Police Department back, yes, they would, we'd know that they're in there. Plus, the advantage is when I was here, we all knew the community, we knew the people in the community. We knew where the problems were, who the problem people were, did you get to know? It's it's harder to do that if you're in a larger agency unless you're focused, unless you're assigning specific people. And I don't know how the sheriff's department's doing. People I know at the sheriff's department are dedicated professionals. So I don't don't knock their performance at all in the slightest. But as was mentioned up here, there are severe staffing issues all around. My department faces it, every other department faces it. We faced it here in Willow's once upon a time. But I want to thank the council for coming to this, making the statement you did you did tonight about prudent looking forward. And I do look forward to the time when we can reestablish a police department for all of us who live here that will be well thought out, looking forward, and will be on a good enough financial footing that we can attract the kind of people that we want, that we need, and it will come here. You know, some of us, I came here and lost a heck of a lot of income back in 2000. My wife and I were looking at coming to Willow's and my pay cut in half. But we came for a quality of life and a lifestyle. And back then, the internet didn't say anything about Willow. We had a small Wikipedia page for Willow's and you had James and Miranda Realty. So Kim James and Rayanne Miranda, now Rayanne Titus, were the biggest ambassadors for this community. Because they sent me things, phone, email. When I came up here to visit, they had stacks of stuff for us. And them, along with Barbecue Shorties and Joy Street, were selling the community and how things were looking forward and positive. But now, if you go online and you look things up, you see disbanded police department. You see financial instability. You see arguments about whether we should have Measure I or not. So we need to spend some time to rebuild that positive, those positive impressions. What are the benefits here? What are the benefits of this community? Sell it to us. We got sold, but it was the people of this community that were ambassadors. My wife and I moved from San Diego County with three kids at the time, and she stayed home. We came up here specifically for that quality of life change. And we haven't regretted it since. Now, we've been here for, this will be year 24. All our kids are grown, my wife and I are still here. My wife just retired from Elk Creek. So, you know, we're fighting for the long term. But thank you for your considered decision. And what I think is wise to put this off until we know our financial footing better. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Carl.
Thank you for your time. All right. With that.
Mr. Mayor, just just.
Anything else to add?
Yeah, just just one real quick, but but important statement here, if if I didn't cover it earlier. I don't believe I did. But I just, you know, just want to assure the council and our constituents that we currently enjoy a very good working relationship with Sheriff Justin Gibbs at Glen County Sheriff's Office. And we have a very amicable, really, really open relationship with with honest and effective dialogue. So I appreciate the sheriff's assistance and professionalism moving forward. So we do have a a solid working relationship with the sheriff's office. Just just want to make sure that that's clear. So and I appreciate the sheriff's help. So thank you.
Sheriff Gibbs has been very, very open about anything going on. I've talked to him several times regarding this. And he's been really helpful in answering questions and things like that. So I think essentially we're just looking for a consensus at this point, right? Direction for staff. And I think everyone's pretty much in agreeance to seek out another two-year extension with the GCSO. So.
Yes.
Perfect.
And revisit this in November, conversation about the sales tax and how the forecast is looking based on actual numbers?
Yes.
Right?
Great. Yeah.
I think you have a consensus.
Yes, I think we have a consensus to search out a two-year con extension with the sheriff's office. And we'll revisit this in November later this year. All right. That being said, we are on to item eight, comments and reports. Item 8A, council correspondence. I do not have any. There any other council correspondents that anybody had?
I do. I have information from Lauren Still, the hospital administrator at Glen Medical Center. She shared with me the hospital consumer assessment of healthcare providers and systems. They've doubled their their satisfaction score within the the city's population. They now have a 60-plus percent satisfaction rate. That doesn't sound great, but the hospital goal for 2025 is an overall score of 75%, which would place the facility in the top 10% of all critical access hospitals. So they've made substantial strides. They have a 71.79% approval, overall approval or assessment from their responses. And they have responses from, and it's fine print, so forgive me. Nursing staff were excellent with me and my new roommate, great food, wonderful staff. Rec department lady was awesome and caring, very caring and understanding. I highly recommend your hospital to everyone. Excellent five star. So what I'm hearing and what I'm reading and what I'm hearing on the street is the hospital is doing much better. Lauren shared with me that some of her marching orders when she arrived back in 2000, and I think fall of 2023, was to repair the rep, the relationship with the Willow's Fire Department to keep the lights on, keep the boilers working and keep it staffed. And work on their census, and they've been doing that. And so from all intents and everything I can see, they are doing that. So I thought I'd want to share with everybody that everybody has a story about Glen Medical Center. Has this been around for what, 70 years?
I was I was born here in 59.
So a lot of folks were born there, not me, but I have used their services. And from everything that I'm hearing, the services that they are delivering to our citizens is awesome and it's gotten a whole lot better. There's always going to be somebody that has a detraction and a negative experience, but that's the way life is. And don't be afraid to use them. I mean, their clinic staff. And you can now, because they have the clinic, they don't have to bill blood work and x-rays through the hospital side, which drives the price up way high. So it used to be I had to go to Orland Quest to get blood work. Now I can go to the hospital and it's the same price and it's covered by insurance. So you have that convenient resource. And my final comment would be if I'm bleeding, broken, and stroking, I want that hospital there, and I think we all do. The only way to keep it there is we support it. And it looks like they're doing their side of it, so let's do our side. That's my.
Thank you. Anything in that report about their BLS, non-emergency ambulance being up to, up and running?
No, she didn't share that.
Okay.
Tidbit, but I know that they were working on having, when you're talking about that, that is a non-emergency.
It's a medical transport. Yes, it's a facility-to-facility transfer vehicle.
Facility transport, so that means you don't have to take a ambulance.
Correct, so normally they take the NLO ambulance out of our area.
Out of service to take somebody to. I think they have that in place.
Really?
Sure if they, I'll confirm that for the next.
Okay. So perfect. Any other correspondence that anybody else has? Okay. Next item is 8B, city council comments and reports. We will start with Councilmember Busby.
Yeah, so we had our library board meeting last week, two weeks ago. The library board wanted to pass along their compliments to the city staff for the speed and the diligence that the roof was handled and the disruption was really minimal. They again asked for funding for the children's librarian position. I mentioned that, hey, we were going to have our April Measure I Finance Committee meeting and that that would be the time to come up and and voice the voice the the need. Just a few little tidbits, about 10,000 people came through the Willow's Library for 2024. About 275 library cards were issued last year. We've got about 10,000 physical books in circulation and about 13,000, including zip and ebooks. So yeah, library board, they're very nice folks. Economic development, I'm going to punt.
Your turn to report.
It's my turn. Okay, economic development meeting. Lori and I met earlier this week, actually yesterday. And we kind of brainstormed a little bit about what the next steps could be for the Economic Development Committee. And I think what we landed on after looking at some of the census data and other things that we've kind of touched on at the first meeting, we'd like to put together a town hall meeting for primarily pointed at business owners inside the city of Willow's. A little bit more of an organic, hey, let's all sit in a circle and and kind of chat and less agendized kind of thing. The plan for that would be to do a lot more listening than talking. Hear what's going right, what's not going right, and how we we might be able to help to not only do economic development in providing counsel with recommendations as to how to go out and find new businesses that come to town, but also how do we keep the businesses that are here here? So yeah, really good, great luck working with Lori.
Did you guys say you have a date for that or you're looking to possibly schedule it in the future?
Brainstorming stage.
Okay. Perfect. All right, Councilmember Hanson?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Excuse me, meetings are back in full swing. It was nice to have a little holiday break, but here we are back. That was short-lived, wasn't it? But yeah, I'll I'll make this this quick, a number of meetings. We spent Valentine's Day afternoon, February 14th, at a joint Cloosa and Glen Groundwater Authority meeting held here. We have a series of Friday afternoon meetings because that's the only day that our, we as board members are available to meet for the next several months with joint meetings with the Cloosa Groundwater Authority, our sister agency, in reference to the groundwater sustainability plan and most notably the domestic well mitigation program and the groundwater demand management program development. We still have not heard back from the Department of Water Resources on our on our groundwater sustainability plan. We expect to hear soon whether it's been approved or not. Hopefully it will be approved. We're eagerly awaiting that report. Last Thursday on February 20th, we had our Regional Transit Committee meeting and the Glen County Transportation Commission meeting held here in Willow's. Lot of routine business. Important note for my colleagues here and our constituents in Willow's. The Caltrans update had some unfortunate news. It's it's not, it's not majorly negative, but it's bad enough. The total reconstruction for Stair道162 slated for 2024. The total reconstruction for Stair道one sixty-two slated for, uh, twenty twenty-six next year is still on track over. It's been delayed. There's been a slight delay of several weeks. We don't know how many weeks for two reasons. Issues regarding the railroad division, the Caltrans railroad division with some federal, uh, issues pertaining to their railroad crossing. And also, uh, delays, uh, regarding other federal issues with, uh, Federal Aviation Administration. They're not deal killers, but there will be delays of several weeks due to, as Caltrans works out those issues with, uh, federal partners. The other, uh, information of note, they're, uh, uh, purchasing updated radio communications equipment, via cell system to have modern radio, effective radio, uh, uh, communication with their drivers, affording, uh, driver and passenger safety with, with the Glen Ride buses, which, which is overdue. Uh, Butte City Bridge, if you haven't heard, uh, was closed over last weekend, thereabouts. The, the, the new structure that is not completed yet, it won't be completed for another year, uh, was, is now open to one-way controlled traffic twenty-four hours a day as with the high water. There was significant movement with the old Butte City Bridge structure noted. So the old Butte City Bridge, my old friend, has been deemed unsafe and will not be used any longer. So the last time I went across that bridge was a couple of days before that. So one, again, one-way controlled traffic twenty-four hours a day on the new structure until it's, uh, completed. So, uh, that, that is interesting news. And, uh, yesterday, uh, my colleague, Rick Thomas and I, along with, uh, Marty Brown, met with Sheriff Gibbs, Under Sheriff Goodwin, and Emmett, uh, Willow's School District Superintendent, and also our city engineer, John Wang, Wanger, and also Joe Bentonport. Uh, we had a public safety, uh, uh, committee meeting and you'll be hearing more as information will be, uh, coming before the city council reference to a couple of issues, uh, in the very near future. We had a very productive, productive meeting with, with the team. And I don't think I missed anything else, uh, as far as I believe. I think that's it. Well, thank, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, it was interesting. I went to Reno, uh, last, when was the week off for school? We went, ended up going to Reno for a day and, uh, we left and we went on the old Butte City Bridge. And when we came back, we got to go right on the new one.
There you go. So you've been on the new one.
Been on the new one. It's a significant height difference. Yeah, so it was, it was good to see the progress that they've made on it and actually be able to drive across it finally, so.
It's a big bridge, big, it's a big structure. You see that pile of debris out of the river?
No, I had, damn, I was focused on staying on the bridge.
Yeah.
I was tired at that point, so I was really focused. Council member Pride, anything?
I do have a couple of things, um, relating to planning. I had a meeting with Joe and Marty this week just to talk about planning in general, um, with the updates to the Willow's Municipal Code, um, a new planning firm, a lot of, a lot of things going on, a couple of vacancies on the planning commission. So what I wanted to bring to council tonight and just see if there's some consensus is to ask staff to do a little bit of research for us. And this might sound a little interesting, but to do a temporary suspension of our planning commission. That would be a temporary suspension of up to a year or so that would allow us time to redo the municipal code, get it kind of dialed in with only having one layer of meetings instead of two. So instead of going to a planning commission and then things coming to council, it would also, because there's currently two vacancies, of the three current sitting commissioners, only one of those has had any real training. There's been not much orientation going on for our planning commissioners. So it's staff time, um, for them to recruit new commissioners, orientate new commissioners, bring them on board, and then orientating them to the current code, because that's what they're going to be enforcing while we're in the process of changing the code and then having new code to bring them up to speed. We've had a lot of turnover in our planning commission over the last few years, so there's just been a lot of staff time spent recruiting and training, trying to bring people up to speed. I hadn't thought of this until the city manager shared the article for the Southern California, um, town that did the same thing. They put their planning commission on a one-year hiatus, um, streamlined a few things to see if they could, in fact, get some things moving a little quicker. So I just, it's an opportunity to do that. So what I would propose tonight is that there's some resonance to that, that we would ask staff to come back and just say, what are the pros and cons in doing that? The limited research I did says that, I don't believe we have to have a planning commission, but if we have one, we need to have a five-member planning commission. And we've really struggled to keep a five-member planning commission. So I've talked to a couple of people, you know, in the community, just to kind of throw that out there. And I don't hear resistance, but there wouldn't be an appeal board. I would think that would be the downside, you know? So if there's some resonance to that and you guys are up for that, then I would be seeing if we could direct staff to come back with the pros and cons to that and does that make sense for us? And, and as I say that, I would say that our, our current commissioners, I mean, my hope is we're doing this massive undertaking of redoing a Willow's Municipal Code that hasn't had a major overhaul in fifty years. There's a lot of stuff we need to be looking at and, and personally, my preference would be that we are starting to look at our code that we have now and saying, what of this do we still want? From a community perspective, we have eighteen pages of sign code. You know, is that all still relevant? I think the question we need to be asking ourselves as we look at our code is what's important to the city of Willow's that furthers our vision of where we want to grow to be? And then of what we say we do, what, what, what do we have capacity to code enforce? You know, are we just putting a lot of stuff out there, but we're not managing it? We have a limited staff these days and so that's where things have unfortunately kind of fallen through the cracks and we're becoming just complaint-driven, which I get. So I have another thing I want to bring up, but I don't know if we want to just talk about consensus. If there's anybody else who's willing to say, I'm, I'm, I'm interested in looking at doing it differently.
I'm in favor of bringing that on as a agenda item to discuss further detail.
Yeah, I'm as well.
Thank you.
So what, quick clarifying question, if I could, council member Pride? Because we are in the middle of a recruitment and we've advertised, I'm assuming you want to sort of suspend that until we do this research assignment?
I would. Last I saw, we had two applications for the two vacancies. So we do have some interest, but again, that's two for two. Not a lot of depth to look at and I'm sure they're both fine. But I just think it's an opportunity rather than bringing people on that we just suspend it until we have the next meeting and can talk. How much time would staff need to be able to, you know, thoughtfully bring something back for consideration?
I think we, probably a month. Maybe, maybe six weeks.
Right.
We kind of have a lot going on, so either the March twenty-fifth or the April meeting, whatever that first meeting in April is.
So in the interim, do you see projects in the queue that are agendized for the planning commission? I mean, we need all three commissioners to be present for that.
Yeah, we've got, uh, we've got one coming up, um, and then we've got some other ones that are on hold and don't know if they would be coming forward, if at all. So currently, no, not after this next meeting, the first Tuesday of the, of the month.
So timing-wise, to delay it a little bit and make a firm decision wouldn't be harmful?
Not as anything is planned right now, no.
Thank you. Does that sound good as a month acceptable for the council?
Sorry, we delaying all, well.
No, we'd still have a planning commission meeting. I, I would say the agendized meeting for.
We're not delaying anything. Um, my question is, we're not delaying anything until we actually make this an agenda item and have it on the agenda.
Yeah, we're going to continue with the planning commission as is until we have, okay, an absolute resolution.
And then you guys bring that back when you guys are ready to plan on a month to six weeks for that?
Yeah, either the March twenty-fifth meeting or the first meeting in April, I would say. You could commit to one of those two.
Yeah, absolutely.
Already that far in twenty twenty-five.
As long as we're not delaying anything.
Yep.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
I don't want, I don't want businesses to stop, you know, business as usual to stop until we have our agenda item.
I mean, there are other models out there, you know? Now's the time to take a look and explore our options.
Perfect. So I think we're in agreeance with that as, as staff bringing something back with some options that they seem fit to bring in direction.
So I have one more.
Go ahead.
So the other request that I wanted to run by council tonight was to consider putting a moratorium on any new food trucks in Willow's until such time as we can actually have a code written to outline how we want to have food trucks in Willow's. We currently do not have a code that really addresses it. There's been a lot of interest in it, but I think rather than continuing to put the, the, the thing into a uncharted box and, and dealing with it as we may, if we just let people know there's a moratorium until we can get a code identified and we don't, to my knowledge, have anybody currently at the table for that.
No.
So we're not like shutting the door in someone's face if we set it now.
We do, just to clarify, we would have to bring forward, um, I believe, an ordinance or moratorium. So there is staff, it isn't just simply saying, we, we don't want to do this. We actually do have to do staff.
Yeah, I was going to say, we have to bring that to a council meeting.
Correct.
But I, I, I think that, that, I'm, my agreeance would be that, that could be sooner than later. I don't know how hard that is for staff to get together or not.
We don't either. So, I mean, I haven't done a moratorium on this topic before. I've done it before in other cities, but not on food trucks, something else. I mean, I, I presumably, I would think we could get, you know, some sort of boilerplate template that's out there and tweak it for, because we're just saying, stop, we're not doing any kind of special policy decision here, so. I don't think it would be that hard, but yeah, I mean, again, I don't want to commit to before the twenty-fifth of March either, because again, we have already, you know, things planned further out. So that's like the best I could offer if we, we were going to come back with that would be like twenty fifth.
And, and the reason for it is it's been falling under the mobile business and it's really not. I mean, they drive to their place of business and they stay there all day and then they drive away. So it's just been trying to, where does it fit? Um, and we've talked about having a mobile food park, you know, so just figuring out a way, how do we do this thing? It's very popular and everyone loves them and they're good, um, in a way that fits their name and everything else. So thank you.
I would ask.
So is that the consensus or?
I would ask the, yeah, I mean, my first question would be the two attorneys, is this something that, um, I mean, how long can we do this for? How long, I mean, does that sound like something that's going to take a long time to draw up or?
We, probably the staff would do the initial draft and then send it to the city attorney. He's usually. Yeah, that's basically what we do. March twenty-fifth sounds fine to me.
Okay.
I mean, we're talking about just grabbing something from somewhere else and changing out the names and then saying, Andrew, could you take a look at this and tell me what you think?
Okay.
Um, and I think we could do like a year. We could do a moratorium. I mean, I don't know what the length would be that you're, I think there, there is a minimum length you can do, isn't, you know, or?
Well, it could be for a definite period of time.
Oh, they can, okay.
So, I mean, be a short-term, a year.
But if the council wants to do it until the code is approved, that's probably more like eighteen months from now.
We can see, look into what are the parameters, what the max on like.
Okay.
Okay, fair enough, yeah, Mr. Mayor. Yeah, I, I'm opposed to a moratorium in any business other than medic, marijuana dispensaries and that ship has sailed, okay? I, I, I don't, I don't believe it, you know, a small town, we, we want to incentivize business. I, I, I don't agree with putting a moratorium on anything. I mean, those are issues that. I, I'm fully aware of that, coun, counselor, thank, thank you very much. Thank you, Carolyn. Fully aware of that. I just want to express to, to my colleagues that, uh, I that I don't share consensus on this topic with them. I realize we'll be discussing this, but I don't think it's wise. Thank you.
Yeah, and we're just looking for consensus to bring this up as, as a discussion item later on in the future.
Like I say, I'm opposed to that, thank you.
I'm going to throw it back on the mayor's lap because as I understand it, the mayor's the one that makes the decision, what goes on the agenda.
I think that council protocol, if we're going to follow that, um, as you may recall from a prior council member who had lots of things that he wanted to put on the agenda, we went through and discovered that the council protocol says that you come to the council as a council member and you ask your colleagues for consensus. So that's why, um, and that council member, it was suggested that he use council comments. So this city manager suggested to this council member that we follow the same protocol that's sort of already a standard. So, I mean, we could change your council protocols if you want to do that differently, but that, that is actually what they say.
I was just referring back to what I read in the protocol manual.
It's also true, the mayor can just go ahead and ask for something, but if it's a lot of research, then usually you ask, I mean, you don't want to just ask for anything that's going to require staff time, then you're running the show by yourself.
I don't want to do that. That's why there's five of us up here.
Yeah.
I'm just here to talk during the meeting.
If four out of five of you want to do it, perhaps it would be okay.
So, uh.
What are you saying, Marty?
I don't know, or even, yeah, I mean.
Do we have a consensus that we're okay with putting a moratorium on food trucks? Moratorium for food trucks on the discussion and action calendar item?
Just to take action.
To discuss the, discuss it and take action on it?
Yes, I'd like to discuss them.
Council member Busby, Z A, Pride, Z A.
We can, we can discuss it, yeah.
Okay.
That's all.
So I think that we have an agreeance, majority to go ahead and bring that back to city council for a discussion item.
And, and my last comment, and I appreciate council member Hanson's comments because I don't, I don't really like that either and, and the discussion will be good. But what I'm seeing is we're potentially have the opportunity again with the, with the revisions to the municipal code that we're looking at, especially Title eighteen. There's been a lot of things that have been difficult, challenging, maybe just don't work so much for Willow's anymore. And I think we have that opportunity where we're paying money for a consultant to really winnow down what is really important to Willow's that is going to help us to move forward as a, as a vital, growing, thriving community that, that provides the parameters that we need to have, um, a say in how things look, but provides the maximum opportunities also for businesses, minimizes code enforcement because we're choosing to focus on the big things. And so in the, in the meantime, as this process has been dragging out, then we know we're still getting some things that are just, they don't fit in any box and we're trying to cram them in a box. And, um, I've paid a lot of attention to planning over the last few months and there's been some pretty gnarly stuff that we've had to struggle with because it's not, it's not clean. So that's where my heart is and, and I don't, I hadn't looked at it that way, council member Hanson, that we're, you know, we're banning a business, it's more of a, 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 let's take it just a pause, you know?
I understand.
Yeah.
I understand.
Anyway, thank you, I appreciate your, you giving me the time. That's it for me.
Okay. And I guess I am last. I don't have a whole lot to report out. I missed our, uh, transit committee meeting.
That's okay, you got appointed to a special committee that's going to meet, uh, to the end of the day. We'll talk later.
Perfect. The daycare involved included because I'll bring a four-year-old along. One thing I did want to say as far as a community goes, uh, Little League is starting. So you will start seeing, um, little kids out there running around on the fields. So be conscious when you're driving past, uh, whis, whis, both during school hours and after, as there are a lot of, uh, small children, um, ages three to seven, running around out there right now. And they don't necessarily look both ways. So, and then also when they start having games, please go out and support your, uh, community and your youth. With that, we will go to, oh, sorry, I have one more thing. Carolyn, thank you for your service. And we, I wish you the best in your future endeavors. And, uh, yeah, thanks for dealing with a lot of the questions that I've had and we've had and the long debates and the long nights that we've had sitting inside these council chambers, uh, making up all sorts of discussions. So, and then I don't want to take too much of the city manager's thunder. I'm assuming this is probably in your report as well. So I will pass this over to the city manager.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
That, that's the thing, I forgot, I, I went to public, I, I was able to talk, uh, to Carolyn privately for a moment or so before the meeting, but sorry I couldn't make, uh, this afternoon Carolyn meet you, meet with you. But, uh, no, uh, I, I echo Evan's comments. Thank you very much for your dedicated and fine service to the city Willow's and for your very capable help and for your friendship. It's, it's been a pleasure and wish you the very best of luck with your future endeavors. You've done a good job here. Sad to see you go. So, okay, all right, Carolyn, good luck. Thank you, thank you for everything. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, of course. City manager?
Uh, with that, I'm going to yield my comments to my esteemed colleague to my left, Joe Bentonport, Community Development Services Director.
Good evening again. So I'm going to give you guys a, a little update on our Sycamore Park beautification and rehabilitation and mobility project, close to the official title. So we've received our fifty percent submittals from our engineering company that we're contracted with, Will Dan. That's, that is a big chunk of the engineering work that, uh, you know, is kind of the bulk of the heavy lifting off the gate. We did run into some issues regarding the pool itself has been kind of the, the, the unknowns are starting to pop up. One of the issues we discovered is that the, the top pool is also connected to the same filtration system as the main pool. So that discovery led to us. So, that discovery led to us getting an estimate on what it costs to replumb the top pool on its own separate system, which was a lot of money and not something that we could do. So, we're currently working, us being Will Dan, John, the city engineer, and myself, on different options to try to either eliminate the top pool, but provide some sort of step-down shallow area for younger kids to be able to play in, in the main pool itself. The challenge with that is also that we want to maintain the competitive swimming lanes that are there, and they are tight as they are, so we cannot do anything but potentially expand into different areas, whether it be an L-shaped or a shallow end. So, we've examined those and kind of came to the conclusion that they're all still a little bit expensive. So, we're having challenges, but we're working as hard as we can to keep the same level of service that we had before within budget. Everything else has kind of been going according to plan minus those budget issues. We're running about two months behind our original anticipated date as far as design work goes. We've talked to Will Dan Engineering about this. This isn't all related to the pool, some of it was just project slip and not getting documents done on time. We're going to really work to try to make up time in between this 50% submittal and the next 80 and 100% submittals, which we feel that we can do, given the fact that we could get over the challenges with the pools, with the pool itself. So, I just wanted to give you an update on that. Things are moving, it's a little slower than, than we anticipated. Originally, we had the bid advertisement was going out in April. Like I said, currently now, we're about two months behind that, so you'd be looking at June, but we were looking to make up as much time as we possibly can in this, in these next design phases. And we also have some ability to do that on our internal side as well, as there's time slated in here, pretty generous amounts of time to review the submittals themselves. So, John ramping up his effort, obviously, I'm not an engineer, so I don't make those calls. And then Will Dan has, you know, promised to really make a full court press for us here and throw, throw as many resources as possible to get us back on track. So, yeah, that being the, the big issue with the pool, and if we have things that are going to be changing due to the pool or, or budget itself, we'll want to, we're bringing those updates back to council and, you know, discussing those guys with you. We know the pool is one of the top priorities, I think, along with the pickleball courts, and so our focus is to definitely get the pool back up and running. Hopefully, we can do that within budget with the current challenges that we're facing, but if not, we need to make cuts to a scope. Worst-case scenario, we would bring that back to your guys' attention for consideration. So, with that, that's, that's my update.
Question?
Yes.
If the hot pool is that difficult, would it be cheaper and easier to do a splash pad in its place?
No, um, just because of the... No, no, absolutely. And I'm just a, I'm an anti splash pad person because of, the problem with it is, is, you know, the maintenance filters. So, with the amount of water that you've got to reuse and the cost of the fil, filters and the microfilters, they do make systems that don't have a filtration, right? And they just flow, and the water goes down the drain per se, but we, we pay cow water and we don't have our own water system, so that's pretty much out of the option.
Got it.
Yeah, so, yeah, no, no. I've had a lot of thought on splash pads previously, and it honestly was an idea that was brought up by, by Will Dan itself, and we, we brought up those same, same concerns that the general fund will be tasked with those long...
Rick, her cow water, and that was all he needed.
Yeah. But, yeah, we're trying to think of everything or anything that we can do to give access to some of the, the younger kids and keep that, like I said, compete, keeping those competitive slim, swimming lanes eliminates just building something into the pool and puts us in, in an expansion-type area to do that.
One quick question for you on that. We did, before we got the grant funding and were able to get the pool into it, we had funds kind of set up for the pool restoration. Are those funds added to this grant funding?
Yeah, they are.
For the wall project, then?
Yep, so we'll be looking at, well, I think there was, some of that pool funding, I don't want to speak on this, might have had to go to the police contract, and then that's where we had to come up with the additional funding for the parks grant originally. We did...
There was originally $200,000 from the city's general fund in the budget for the swimming pool, but after negotiating the sheriff's contract, we needed those monies, and so it was taken out of the project. We pivoted and readjusted the grant application, and the state allowed it, right?
I can't remember exactly how that...
We have the county's money in there, we have another grant that, I don't know, had never been spent, and was, was, the city was awarded in 2019, long before I got here, and we have that teed up to be added to this money as well as the county's, and then this larger $4 million grant.
So, we're getting a slide?
No, okay.
We're going to let everything slide.
We're going to, we're going to get the pool open. I'm going to give you that one. Absolutely.
Thank you, Joe, for the report.
Yeah, no problem.
City Manager Marty, you have anything to add to that?
No, I don't.
Okay. And for, I'm just going to throw it out there since nobody's stated yet. Andrew, welcome to your first Willow City Council meeting, and we'll have further discussion in closed session, I guess. So, welcome.
Thank you very much.
All right, and with that, we will be going into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 549, 54.3, the public will have an opportunity to directly address the legislative body on the item below prior to the council convening in the closed session. Public comments are generally restricted to three minutes. Are there any public comments in regards to Items 9A, Conference with Legal Negotiators, Item 9B, Conference with Legal Counsel, or Item 9C, Conference with Legal Counsel?
9D and 9E.
Oh, sorry, I missed a page. And Item 9D is a David, Conference with Legal Counsel over existing litigation, and Item 9E, Public Employee Performance Evaluation, City Manager. Any public comment? Anything in closed session? Okay. At this point, we will go into closed session at 7:36.
Thank you.